I call this meeting to order. And Madam Clerk, the roll call?
Commissioner Dodge?
Here.
Commissioner Lieberman?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we get started, I'm very excited today that we are recognizing our environmental services, employee recognition. And I'm going to hand it over to Michael. But it's just so much fun when we have, we have a rock star team here at Montgomery County. And others have noticed it. So I'm going to send it over to you and Matt for the details. But I'm quite excited to have you all here so we can thank you in person and recognize you.
Thank you, Commissioners. And we've got a great team. James, you want to come up to the podium? And, you know, they continue to get recognition, James and Bob and the whole team. And, you know, we just launched a new compactor out there. So I want to introduce Matt Hilliard, our Director of Environmental Services, to bring the team up so they can all be recognized.
Thank you, Commissioners. And thankfully, we're not the only ones who think our employees are great. So three of our employees here today were awarded for the Character X at Solid Waste Association of North America of Ohio, also known as Swana. The award ceremony was in Columbus a few weeks ago. So please join me in congratulating our very own Bob Downing, Brian Ellis, and Ray Rayberg, who are here with us today. Bob. Bob is our Assistant Director of Environmental Services, and he has been with Montgomery County for 16 years and in the industry for 42. Brian Ellis and Ray Rayberg both brought home the Safety and Excellence Awards. So great job there. And here to tell us more about their awards is James Profit. He's the manager of our operations at Solid Waste. James?
Thanks, Matt. Thanks, Michael and Commissioners. So we're grateful to have Brian and Ray on our team as they demonstrate selflessness at work and outside of it. Ray had been on our Safety Committee for many years and trains new employees how to safely operate our heavy equipment. He does a great job of recognizing safety issues and bringing them to a supervisor's attention. Brian has not only served on our Safety Committee for 15 years, but he's also a volunteer firefighter. He also trains new employees to drive the semi trucks to the landfill loaded with the municipal solid waste and the transfer trucks. Together, Brian and Ray have a combined experience of 43 years at the county. Amazingly, in that time, they've never had an at-vault incident. They both help train our next generation of employees, which is critical, and they do a great job. I'd like to welcome Bob Downing up here to say a few words now.
Thank you, James.
Thank you, Commissioners. And I do want to reiterate, we do have a great team there. The award that Ray and Brian won was a professional safety award for the industry. The other award was the Innovator of the Year Award, based on the master plan work that we've done out there the last 12 years. And I'd be remiss if I didn't introduce the team on that. VJ Chikara from OMB, he managed the finance. Bill Horace came to be with us today, but he was the Capital Program Manager and actually took our visions and turned them into sticks and bricks. And I'd be remiss without mentioning James and, of course, Commissioner Dodge, who's been with us on our Solid Waste Management Policy Committee and Advisory Committee since before we started the master plan. Certainly want to appreciate all the support we have gotten over the years. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, James. Congratulations.
We definitely have to get a picture.
Come on, guys. You're not allowed to leave yet.
And didn't we, didn't some of our, Matt, did some of our, just a short while ago, some members wanted, doing the thing fast together?
Oh, we're coming up here?
Oh, good. Yeah, no, come up here. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You guys are on a roll.
Come on, come on, come on.
You got overruled. Hey.
Where, Robert, where do you want? Yeah, they did. I mentioned they're right. How are you?
Thank you.
Come on down here. Come on down here.
John, John Manier. John Manier, get up here. Get up there, John.
Yes, ma'am.
Nice and tight.
This is BJ, my buddy. Commissioner Dodge? What? With the other Commissioners? She's so...
She is. She did. She said it's rough.
I'm sorry.
Where do you want me to go?
On the other side of that, Commissioner.
It's not always this complicated. I'm telling you. She's military. Yeah, you can tell, right? No, I don't want to be in front of anybody. Okay, everybody look over there, Robert.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
And I did want to put it on the record that Bob's award was the Innovator of the Year Award.
That's right.
For all of his hard work, his creativity.
Yes. We talked about that last week.
Yep.
Yes, we did.
Yes. Congratulations.
I mean, think about that. Innovator of the Year. Right?
Out of all of the Ohio chapters, yeah.
Amazing.
Want to reconvene the innovations?
Thank you.
Innovation capital, right?
Yep, sure is.
That's right.
Thank you.
Ryan? Congratulations again. Good job.
Thanks.
And now we will have our County Engineer.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Administrator, ladies and gentlemen. We have two items today. The first is Resolution 22-1488, authorizing the transmittal and relative priority ranking for the 2022 STP, CMAQ, TA, and CRR SAA.
It's so meaningful.
Funding application submitted to the Miami Valley Regional Plan Commission. And 1489 is to authorize an agreement with R.A. Miller Construction Company, Inc. for the 2022 ADA Ramp Improvement Program countywide at their lowest and best bid of $299,698.92 through June 1 of 2023. This is a project we bid earlier in the year, and the bids came in high. So we waited until later. But the timing is better, so we got a good bid this time.
Good. Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
County Sheriff?
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the County Sheriff, we have Resolution 1490, accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Ohio Traffic Safety Office, for funding of the High Visibility Enforcement Overtime Program in the amount of $101,102.36.
Move for approval. But I also want to say our thoughts are definitely with the Sheriff's Department and the inmates and their families that were affected yesterday by that tragedy. You know, you see those guys out there doing that work, and we're thankful for it. And it was just really, really horrible yesterday that that happened. So again, I'll move for approval.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Juvenile Clerk?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Commissioners. On behalf of Anthony Pizzi, Administrator Judge, we have one item for consideration today, 22-1491, which is authorize an agreement with Dr. Julie Miller of Child Psych Services LLC to provide neuropsychological assessments for youth in an amount not to exceed $27,000 through December 31, 2022.
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Miami Valley Regional Crime Lab?
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the Miami Valley Regional Crime Lab, we have Resolution 1492, authorizing an agreement with the Indiana State Police Department for contact drug analysis services in the amount not to exceed $504,220 through September 30 of 2023.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
County Administrator?
Under the County Administrator and the Clerk's office, we have approved the minutes of the meetings on September 27, 2022. Resolution 1493, approval of bills, and Resolution 1494, approval of travel and expenses. Both of those lists are available in the Clerk's office.
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Administrative Services?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Today, we have just a handful of resolutions for your review, beginning with 1495. This is the Approval of Personnel Actions. This list is available in the Clerk's office. 1496 authorizes an agreement for consulting services with Wolfert Incorporated for Infiltration and Inflow Reduction Program Development for the Environmental Services Department in an amount not to exceed $49,240 through December 31 of 2022. 1497 authorizes a facility rental agreement with Sinclair Community College for the Montgomery County Food Summit in an amount not to exceed $8,136.50 through November 10 of 2022. 1498 selects a bid and authorizes an agreement with Butler Town, I'm sorry, Butler Asphalt LLC, pavement contractor for the Arthur Fisher North Tennis Court Refinish Project at their lowest and best bid of $95,031.83 through May 31 of 2023. 1499 authorizes a change order to the agreement with Security 101 LLC, security contractor, for the Troutwood Structured Cabling and Security Project by increasing the original amount by $45,070.73 for a revised total of $222,947.3. And we do have one late item, and it's 1508. And this authorizes a facility rental and catering services agreement with Sinclair Community College for the Veterans Services Commission in an amount not to exceed $2,851.50.
Commissioners, before you approve, you know, 1498, the work that we're doing.
I was going to talk about that.
Commissioner, on, and I know you know about it, in Jefferson Township on the tennis courts. Who would have known? You know, tennis is really starting to pick up now. And the tournaments and the capabilities that they'll have now is pretty spectacular.
Yeah, my office was happy to get that call and to know that the youth are playing tennis. And so, you know, and it's a beautiful facility we have out there. And so we, some of the courts were done, but then others need to be done. And the gentleman that is in charge of it and coordinates it all said, oh, we will definitely use all those courts. So we're really happy that we can do this for the community and for Arthur Fisher Park, actually. So it's good news.
Well, and hopefully, Commissioner, we can bring some tournaments out to the park.
Yeah, yeah. Now there's a lot of courts. How many total courts are there? In a tie?
Four.
Four courts? Okay. Okay. I thought there were. Okay. Yeah, you're right. All right. Well, I'm moving for approval.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Environmental Services?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For Environmental Services, we have Resolution 1500, authorize an agreement for payment of $3,087 and issue a warrant in that amount to the city of Dayton for an easement deed for sewer lines in connection with the Austin Boulevard sanitary sewer replacement project. The final two are authorized agreements. The first is Resolution 1501 with GPD Group for Surveying and Geotechnical Consulting Services for the Terrace Villa Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project at a cost not to exceed $8,200 through December 31, 2022. And the last one is 1502 with CG Construction and Utilities, Inc. for construction of the Oil and Tangee Water Main Relocation Project at their lowest and best bid of $61,700 through March 24, 2023.
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Human Services?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have a couple of resolutions for you. Resolution 1503, which is to accept the Core General for Elderly, Homeless and Housing Supported Services Recommendations of the Human Services Levy Council and negotiate agreements with selected providers for services to begin January 1 of 2023. Also, Resolution 1504, to accept a sub grant award from the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services to support County Child Support Enforcement Agency, CSEA, Access Visitation Program in the amount of $66,233. And then we have a late agenda item, which is Resolution 1509, authorizing a memorandum of understanding with Omega Community Development Corporation to support the effective delivery of services to individuals and families in the Hope Zone Promised Neighborhood.
Commissioners, I'd like, Jerry, to talk a little bit about the Promise MOU.
Yes, this is a MOU. It's a great, it's a great opportunity for us to leverage resources that we've already invested in our community. And Omega is one of the communities in the state of Ohio that is submitting for this Promise Neighborhood Program grant from the U.S. Department of Education. So we're very excited that this is an opportunity to leverage resources that have already been committed within our community.
Yeah, it's great. The Promise Neighborhoods. It took a while to launch it, but it's, I think that'll be great. And especially since that, that whole area, you know, the Blue Meridian and all of it working together. I think we're going to see some real transformational change there. So I'm happy we can support this.
Right. Real synergy.
Yep.
Yep.
I'll move for approval.
Okay, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Business Services?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Under Business Services, Community Economic Development, we have a Resolution 1505, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Dayton Montgomery County Port Authority for funding support for the Sierra Nevada Maintenance and Repair Hangar at the Dayton International Airport in an amount not to exceed $200,000 through December 31, 2023.
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. And can I just say something about that project? It's huge.
I wasn't going to say anything.
I know, because you knew I was going.
I knew you was, so I said, oh.
He keeps beating me to it. But that, I mean, okay, so 200,000, it's a nice commitment, but it's not huge for what we're getting as a community with Sierra Nevada being here. It's just the beginning, from what we've been told. And so I'm really happy that we're able to be a part of that and support the port on that. And looking forward to, it'll be the, who did I read about it? Like, the largest maintenance repair in the state? Yeah.
In the Midwest.
In the Midwest. Yeah, so. It's going to be great. It will be. Yeah, so.
All right. Did we move?
I think we did, yeah.
Okay. I lost.
I know. Sorry.
All right. Now, under County Commissioners, we have Resolution 22-1506 to reappoint Richard Schultz to serve on the Developmental Disability Services Board through December 31, 2026.
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And now we have a hearing on 1507, the North Gettysburg Rehabilitation Project.
Commissioners, David Shields is our project manager on the Gettysburg Bridge Project, and he'll be giving the presentation.
Mr. Shields and Mr. Gruner, would you raise your hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here to talk to you about the North Gettysburg Avenue Rehabilitation Project in the city of Dayton. This project is located between, it's on North Gettysburg Avenue, between Little Richmond Road and Cornell Drive, also just north of James H. McGee Boulevard. This project consists of two parallel structures over Wolf Creek Pike with two separate bridge identification numbers. Project scope includes rehabilitation by abutment conversion to semi-integral type abutments, a thrive beam railing retrofit at the safety curbs on the interior of both bridges, painting of the beams, upgrading guardrail, patching and sealing concrete surfaces of the curb and parapets. And this project will match the existing roadway alignment and profile. Existing condition of the bridge, on the left, you see the northbound bridge looking north and the southbound bridge looking south. These images show why this project is necessary. We have some deterioration to the back walls, which is the reason why we are going to convert them to semi-integral type abutments. We will be removing the existing back walls and patching the vertical faces in front of the beam bearings. You can see the back walls have deteriorated to the point where soil is infiltrating through and has created some holes at the roadway surface, which have been patched and have been manageable to this point. As you can see on the left, there is also some damage to the ends of the bridge. These areas will be repaired. And on the right, you see the existing condition of the steel protective system, the steel coating system or paint. To the left, you see the condition of some of the curbs on this project. Those areas will be patched. And the right, the parapet walls, which will also be patched. There are two impacted properties on this project. Both are owned by Five Rivers Metro Parks, and both are on the west side of the bridge. Both temporary takes are necessary in order to gain access below the bridge to do the work. An acquisition of 0.145 acres of temporary easement is necessary for access under the bridge for construction. The temporary easements are 0.106 acres from parcel 12 and 0.039 acres from parcel 14, as you can see there in blue. This is parcel number 12 on the west side of the road. And this is parcel 14 on the west side of the road as well. Project is currently under design. We have engaged a consultant to perform the design for us at a cost of $336,546.18. The cost of right-of-way will be determined by real estate appraisal. And the current estimate for construction costs is $1,430,000 for a total of $1,766,546.18. Current project schedule, design, as I said, is underway. It began in November of 2020 when we hired the consultants, and it is set to wrap up next month, towards the end of the month. Right-of-way acquisition will begin later this month, and it should be wrapped up around December of 2022. At that point, we will move on to advertisement and award in the first quarter of 2023. And we anticipate construction to be able to be completed in the year of 2023. Any questions?
I do. What's a thrive beam?
Thrive beam? Okay, so it is, you know what the regular shape of the guardrail is? It's like a W kind of, wavy W. This actually has an extra, an extra wave in it.
I had a feeling it probably was three. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, even after 18 years, I always learn from you guys. I'll never forget when I first learned what swalling was. So a thrive beam, okay. I'll be looking for that.
Did you see the, the news story where the reporter was out on the bridge last week? It was, it aired the night that I did the hearing or the viewing last week. The reporter was actually out standing on this, what they call the safety curb. We don't build those anymore because they're not really safe to walk on. So why they would call it a safety curb, I'm not sure. And that thrive beam retrofit actually sits on top of that two-foot-wide safety curb so that people can't walk on it.
Can't walk on it.
And it also, it also moves the parapet, like the face there. Instead of having just a parapet that goes straight up, now that guardrail is out flush with the curb for vehicle safety as well.
I did. I'm really happy about it.
Nobody wants to ask about the semi-integral abutment?
I saw it. No. I don't want to know about it. I think I can figure it out. Now, this is, this is totally kind of a joke, but not really. This is where the city is really having a lot of issues over the hooning, as they call it. And so this, that, though, is probably like right in the middle of some of the racing, right?
It, it, there's probably some up and down. When I, when I talked to Fred over at City a few months ago, a lot of the problem was farther north, where it curves into Salem Avenue. There's curve there, curves in. Yeah, yeah. That's where he was talking about.
That's making that even more dangerous.
Yeah, well, I knew they had talked about doing some things to slow traffic down. Well, our construction will for a while. But, okay.
Hopefully.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, hopefully.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I move to close the public hearing and determine that the project is needed and the safety, convenience, and welfare for the traveling public requires the North Gettysburg Avenue Bridge Rehabilitation Project in the city of Dayton and recognize it is also necessary to facilitate the right of the public to improvement and maintenance of an uninterrupted traffic, travel to county roads pursuant to Chapter 5553 of the Ohio Revised Code and authorize the county engineer to proceed with right-of-way negotiations.
I'll second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next, we do not have any comments by citizens this week. So our county administrator?
Thank you, Commissioners. And you gave me a segue, Commissioner Lieberman, with the Sierra Nevada conversation. So when you look at Sierra Nevada and Chewy and Crox and Amazon, the Gateway Project that you Commissioners led in the US40 project is now complete. And that is going to help not only the flow of truck traffic with five lanes, but it's also going to make for better pedestrian safety. So the construction began nearly two years ago. And we now have, as I mentioned, full five lanes giving trucks that are heading to our corporations, like the companies I just discussed, greater access. It's also going to provide safety for all drivers in the area. Total investment in this project was 12.4 million, in this project was twelve point four million, and it was a huge local collaboration, Union, Vandelia, Dayton, not counting all of the surrounding offices that helped us, especially ODOT, our county engineer, Paul Gruner, his team. This was just a great project for everyone, so thank you, Commissioners, and it's great to have this one done, and, you know, we look forward to seeing the access to trucks for these businesses.
You're right, Michael, it was great to be there last week, cold, but started-
But beautiful.
It was beautiful, it was beautiful, but I guess we better get used to that cold. You know, and while we were sitting there during that event, I thought about all the different strategic investments that we are making right now over the next few years. This particular one, we know will not only keep some of the logistics and distribution issues that we have up there down, but we know that we can probably bring more companies to the area, so that, that's exciting. So we have the infrastructure investment, and the other thing is, and we talked about this last week as well, is our workforce, and, you know, we have, our workforce team works very hard, they even had the big workforce RV out there last week, and we invest a lot, not only in our resources for infrastructure, but in, in our, in our workforce, and what we do is we, we train for those jobs that are here, those jobs that we have said, not just us, but the Dayton Development Coalition and others have said, this is the demand and this is what we have in our region, and we want to make sure that we're getting people trained and upskilled for those areas. We know that there, we have a lot of opportunity, we talk about that a lot, but there are so many jobs that are going unfilled, and so we are, we're one piece of that workforce need, but, you know, we're happy that we're able to work with others, companies, to make sure, and one of the things that we're real proud of, and the truck was also out there last week, is our truck driving school that we have supported for how many years, Michael? Five?
Yeah, ever been a, yeah.
And-
And it's in our facility, our Ritchie facility.
Yes, it is, that's a great reuse of one of our facilities. I drive down Salem every day and see that truck driving school, and also see some of the new truck drivers coming down the road, and I go, like, okay, but it's, you know, you can tell it is because it says on the side of the truck that they're students, but, you know, one of the things that we're able to do is make sure our workforce team is able to provide some free training for people, so you can go there regardless, but you can also maybe get training through, through us, through the county. So you can go to the jobcenter.org and check out all the resources that we have available. Thank you.
And another, that was a great event, and was beautiful, and it is just so nice to see something so done, you know, I think one of the advantages that we have here is just we hear about projects, like even this one, and we happen to go by. The other day I was, it didn't seem that long ago, but we were talking about airway road, you know, and that is in progress, so I, we just have a great opportunity to talk about all over the county of how we're making improvements that really help to make our roads safer and more, you know, efficient for people and to just upgrade them, so thank you, Paul, for all that you do. It's actually kind of interesting.
You're welcome. I think I mentioned I have much to do with the Forty Project, but-
Yeah, yeah.
You are.
However, I designed the original bridge.
Oh, did you?
Forty over the access road, which they kept for most of.
Oh, it was such a good job.
Yeah, yeah, all right.
Well, it's good to have your support, Paul.
That's great, yeah, thanks, Paul.
Always appreciate it.
Well, and another great event this past weekend was the Levitt Pavilion Pop-Up Concert. I know there was, Jerry was there, Michael was there, a lot of us were there, and once again, a beautiful day, a little nippy, but if you were in the sun long enough, you got warm, and it was out at our West Town Shopping Center, out by the VA, across from the VA, where our beautiful, you know, Employment Opportunity Center, it was a great introduction, and we had hundreds of people there, and the music was fantastic, and in fact, there was, in the beginning, there was a, a group of young people, Jimmy's Angels, and told the whole story of how that all got started, and the drama, I mean, all of the dancers, what, do you call that dan, I mean, I don't know how they contort and-
Drill teams.
Drill team. But it's how you get your leg up over your head, I have no idea, but they did that, and then the drummers were, some of them were as young as third grade, which I have grandchildren that age, and talking to the little boys, they said they'd been practicing for four weeks, and I was like, they can learn that in four weeks? Imagine when they really, so great alternatives for our youth to learn real positive things and introduce all of that. I said that, I'm, it was just a fabulous afternoon, and I heard over and over, people were going inside and discovering it, even though that's almost a year old now, it's still new to the community in so many ways, so I just think we're going to see each year more and more citizens taking advantage of it, and they love, love, love Dayton Funk All-Stars.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
Well, it's a great resource. It really is a great resource up there. So many people are using it for events, you know, in the evenings, so, and we've got a great team out there that runs it.
Yeah, so that was just, we've had a whole string of really great things, you know, ideas that come, they, they become real, and then you see people embracing them, and I just know the future's going to be that much brighter, so we wanted to send everybody down there, if you, I know sometimes it's hard to get down here to the Job Center, but with, between the mobile vans that can go out anywhere where we can arrange to events like this, the whole idea is to wrap all of this around our citizens and hopefully make a brighter future for everyone, so very, very exciting. And then I just wanted to mention two other things, that Yonkaper begins its center today, so deepest respect to everyone celebrating Yonkaper, and I saw this on my calendar, I thought it was pretty cool. Tomorrow, October fifth, is Do Something Nice Day. I just like the ring of that, so I challenge everybody in this who's listening to do something nice that you weren't planning to do. Wouldn't the world be a better place if everybody just did one little, open a door, as small or as big as you want to be, so everybody do something nice tomorrow, so that's all I have. I'm having a great time this week, as you can tell.
Good. Well, I have to give a shout-out to the opening of U.S. Forty. You know, I've lived that for how many years, so I couldn't have been more happy to have been there, trust me, but we had just such a great turnout of so many, of everyone that was involved in it, so that was great, I thought it was a great turnout, thank you, Paul.
And Judy, did you hear the, some of the jurisdictions said it was able to bring jurisdictions together that traditionally hadn't, hadn't necessarily been together on projects, so I thought that was, that was pretty huge, that, you know, those statements were made and those jurisdictions were working together.
And they actually spoke to each other very nicely.
Yeah, so that was great.
So I thought it was nice.
It is good, it really is.
No, it's very nice, very nice. Now, this week, our environmental services team is offering appliance amnesty to Montgomery County citizens. So that means that if you have a large appliance, like refrigerators, air conditioners, water heaters and stove, we're going to be accepting them at the solid waste transfer station and recycling facility free of charge as long as you have proof of residency. The transfer station is located at one thousand one, N Creek Lane in Moraine. Now, here are the days and hours for the appliance amnesty event. Wow, it's this week, Thursday and Friday, October sixth and seventh, from six AM to seven PM, and Saturday, Sep, what did I say? October. Did I say September?
You started to.
You started to, but you catch yourself.
I, did I catch myself?
You did, you did.
So anyway, Thursday and Friday, October sixth and seventh, from six AM to seven PM, and Saturday, October eighth, from eight AM to three PM. Now, if you want more information, look on our Facebook page, MontgomeryCounty.org. Thank you.
Matt, how many times a year do we do that?
Yeah.
It's twice a year.
Okay, I thought so.
Just twice a year?
Yes.
So I probably have to get it at the next one.
I'm going to have to look at my stove, refrigerator, and anything else I have.
I got, I got a big fridge. I knew it was coming, but, you know, get the truck and do all that.
I know. And Megan, you need to take pictures of how much piles up, because, you know, when we were out there, I learned, I'm still, this is, you learn something every day, I learned that the biggest thing that if we were at the compactor, you know, when we were out there a couple of weeks ago, I asked, what's the biggest thing that's ever arrived here? And it was a boat.
Really?
A boat, and they've had that more than once, as well as a trailer, and I just can't conceive, so I want to see a mountain of appliances, what that looks like. It just blows my mind, and wonderful that we get it off of places where they're not intended to be.
Right, right.
And where they can be handled properly, but please take a picture for me, Megan, okay? I would appreciate it. I'll, I'll actually show my fellow citizens, because I use that, it's like, okay, what do you think is the biggest thing that ever got dropped off at our solid waste? Nobody guesses a boat.
No.
Nobody. Anyways, you can tell I'm in a good mood today, can't you? All right.
Definitely a chatty mood, aren't you?
I know, I apologize, everyone. I'm getting ready for Do Something Nice Day tomorrow.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, with that said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Our next meeting will be next Tuesday, October eleventh, at one thirty PM, and I hope to be in just as little mood next week as this week, but everyone have a wonderful, wonderful week.